Alaska was admitted in August, November. Alaska, forty-nine. August, forty-nine, fifty-nine. Well, I don't know, sorry. That's Hawaii. In January, fifty-nine, Alaska, forty-nine, state, and a half million for Hawaii.
Come to order the May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four business meeting. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Students who are alive on the United States of America and to regard that we are just one nation under God in the principle of the liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ramon.
Here.
Mrs. Lemon.
Here.
Mr. Montalyn.
Here.
Mr. Price. Mr. Shalinski.
Here.
Mrs. Seko.
Here.
Mr. Taz. Mrs. Wong.
Here.
Mrs. Snack.
Here.
Section two, student report from achievements. Ms. Julia Smith with student council. Is this your last meeting or best year?
Yes. So I just have a few events to report on since we did have two months to read. We had a blood drive last April and a few weeks ago, I think it was just the other week, we had a teachers appreciation week. Each student council member wrote letters for their favorite students and their, excuse me, their favorite teachers. And then the teachers got those during the week. We also had the hot fun, hot bus school truck come and the teachers could have coffee or some rolls. They placed their orders and the student council members ran them up to the rooms. Student council members also got some coffee. At the senior awards, the student council distinguished service award was given to Riley Rick Sanders. That was announced last Friday. We also recognized some student council members, Peter Klosser, Jake Gilbert, Zach Schrockman, and Marcus Centipal. And student council officers were given medals. Nina Casabanda was awarded the presidential medal. Myself, I was given the vice president medal and where it comes through was given the secretary medal. We will be having ice cream truck for students on the last day of school. It was for all students, not just student council members. And on the twenty-eighth, these seventh and eighth graders will be awarded those student council membership awards. That's when they're having the meal school awards. And tomorrow we're having our end of year commitment. Well, I think we're gonna have that inside this year. It's looking a bit rainy tomorrow, so we'll probably have that in school tomorrow. That's all I have.
We're gonna miss you, Julia. We'll often have to do this year.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Section two point two, student recognition. We're gonna start with school musical. We're recognizing Molly Baker, cast member, and Bonnie Myers, a crew member.
Well, I actually had a letter from Ms. Elick. She asked me to read as well, if you don't mind, Molly, for a second. It just said, Dear Bergestown area school board, we had a very successful run of our spring musical, Chitty Chitty Bang Bang Junior. From monsoon-like weather on our opening night to a line out the door for tickets on closing night. We could not have done it without the amazing support of our school districts, families, and communities. We are so grateful to the opportunity to make art that we are proud of with the, uh, we are proud of with these incredible, talented, young individuals. Many of our students deeply value our drama program, but they can tell you more about that shortly. Above all, thank you for your support of our program. You are truly scrumptious. Ms. Elick and Mr. Austin Michael.
Thank you.
Hello. Unfortunately, Molly was unable to make it for reasons that are not mine to share. But my name is Molly Baker. I was in, I have the privilege of being admitted to musical Chitty Chitty Bang Bang Junior. I was in the cast and I played a character called Trudy Scrumptious. When Ms. Elick came to me asking if I would talk about my experience being in musical, saying I was excited would be a bit of an understatement. I've personally been in the musical since two thousand sixteen in Into the Woods, but this year has certainly stood out to me. This year has been one of the, one of our theater department's biggest projects in years. It is insane how much work our casting crew put in to make this one of the best musicals our school has put on. From the setting to the choreography to the singing into the costume design, it is hard to describe just how much work all of the amazing people in casting crew have put into that show. When you join musical, the casting crew almost becomes like a second family to you. No matter who you are, everyone in the cast and crew is ready to accept anyone with open arms and be there for you when you need it. I doubt any words of the English dialect could help us explain to you how important that is, especially for kids in middle and high school. It can be tough. Musical is one of the activities where in order to truly understand how much the musical means to people, you have to be there. Not just by being part of it in the cast or the crew, but also just showing up and showing your support. That said, we would like to thank you all for your support and for having us tonight.
So next up, we'd like to recognize basketball, the boys' basketball. We'll start with them. I'll introduce the, the players one at a time. So, Ring? Okay. So, I'm sorry, we're recognizing Zach. I'm sorry, his entire team came with him, so. But Zach Schrockman, congratulations on one thousand points in your career. That is, for anyone who doesn't know, that's a massive accomplishment as an athlete. There's a very select few folks who in the history of this school district have hit that mark. And so, congratulations to Zach Schrockman for the boys' basketball team. And as well, congratulations to Caitlin Meese, who also did the same thing, one thousand points in her career, which is, again, very, very impressive for the young ladies' basketball team. So, congratulations to both of you. I think Coach Brian has something to say, and I'm not sure Coach Megan, if you would like to as well.
Yeah, I'll just give my short spiel here. We'll start with Zach. So he scored a thousand points this season. His final game actually was, how many points shot going in?
Going into the game, I believe it was eight points.
Eight points shot going into the final game. He ended up reaching the mark and, oh, six points, sorry. And scored a thousand points in his last game against Bishop Cannon. It was a playoff game. Unfortunately, that game didn't end in a loss, but it was a really good game. So he's the first male player to reach the mark since two thousand eleven, the pilot paving did it. He's the fifteenth member of the thousand point club and he finished his career with one thousand and fifteen points.
When I took over this job two years ago, I went to Zach because he was the point guard in previous year and I said, I want you to become like me. I want you to get in my back pocket and know how I think, how I want things run. He said, yes, coach. That kid would run through a wall for me and this team, okay? There's a, all these kids will. One thing you gotta know about Zach, though, it was all about winning. It was never about individual accolades. Just to say a little bit on that, going into the fruit cherry game, how many did you need, twenty-two, twenty-three? Okay. Either way, he didn't take his first shot until two minutes left in the first half. It's not about points, Rick. Same thing going into the Bishop Cannon in playoff game. He didn't take his first shot until the second quarter. So that says a lot about his upbringing, his character, and his leadership. And I hope you guys hear what I'm saying now and follow his lead. And I'd like to present this ball from the boosters and the basketball team to Zach.
Next, we have Caitlin Meese, who also scored a thousand points this year. She did so in a win over Apollo Ridge early in the season. She's actually the fifth female in school history and the fourteenth player to reach the thousand point mark. She was the first player since two thousand eleven and the first female since two thousand, three weeks a thousand point mark. She ended her career with one thousand three hundred and thirty-five points. This places her fourth on the all-time list for scoring in school history, boys' annuals. Do you have any of that?
Yeah, I do a lot of my spiel.
Sorry.
That's okay. All right, so Caitlin Meese, if you don't know Caitlin, she's sitting right here, gray sweatshirt, long hair. She's been a big part of our program. As some of you may know, our program has had the most success within the last four years since the nineties. And a lot of that is, you know, they have a lot of talent, but a big, big part of that is Caitlin. She was a starter all four years, starting as a freshman is only something maybe three, four kids I've ever had do. It's tough to start when you're that young. But she not only started, but was leading scorer of her freshman year as well. She was all section every single year, freshman, sophomore, junior, and senior year, and all section is determined by the coaches in the section. So it's not something that the newspapers vote on, that's, the coaches vote on that. And we're not even allowed to vote for our own pick. We have to only vote for other teams in the section. So that says a lot about her. This year, she was also Fab Five in two A, and that's named by the Post Gazette. So she was named Fab Five, not overall, but for two A, class two A, which is pretty special, when we five girls get that. She was chosen for the roundball classic as a select group of seniors that are chosen to play. They're playing at North Allegheny, I believe, coming up in a couple of weeks. Recently, she has committed to play at basketball at La Roche University in Pittsburgh, so we're really excited about that. This is my, I know there's other girls' basketball players that have played in college, but as far as my kids, like, girls that I've seen, she's the very first one to be playing in college, so I'm very excited about that. Some records she broke this year, aside from getting her thousand points, she has now sixteen deflections in one game, which I know some people don't even count deflections as records, but I think they're really important because I really focus on defense. And deflections are any time you get a hand on the ball defensively, and that creates steal opportunities. And she did that a lot, a lot of it's part of her, because she's got a long wingspan, she's very tall, but it definitely helps us. So that was sixteen points in a game against, I think, Storox. And then she also has the block shots record in her career with two thousand, or two hundred and nine block shots in her career. She broke the, the school record for points in a single game with forty-five this season. And then she also, like Nathan said, got a thousand points, ending her career with one thousand three hundred and thirty-five. So we're very proud of Caitlin and happy to see that she's going on to play basketball next year.
Next, we'll recognize wrestling, excuse me, and I'm sure Mr. Camper has something to say about that as well.
Yep. So we'll start with Parker Centipal, cuts the winner of win mark this season, or sorry, last season. Finished his career with one hundred and fifty-four wins. This is actually a school record, passing Austin Michael, I think, the one fifty-three, so by one win. Parker qualified for the state tournament four times. He is a woodbeale champion, a regio champion, and is a one-time state medalist. Gavin Swiga clips the winner of win mark this season, finished his career with one hundred and forty-three wins. Gavin qualified for the state tournament four times and is a two-time state medalist. Rudy Brown also earned his one hundredth win this season and finished his career with one hundred and thirty-one wins. Rudy won the woodbeale championship this year for the one hundred and fifty-two pound weight class. He is a state, or two-time state qualifier. Rudy actually won forty-eight matches this year, which led the woodbeale in all classes and is a new school record. Congratulations to Rudy. We have Joey Veronic, who earned his one hundredth win as well. I promise this doesn't always happen, this is only five in, what, two years, it's pretty crazy. Finished his career with one hundred and thirty wins. Joey is a three-time state qualifier, woodbeale champion, and a two-time state medalist. And then we had finally Dylan Slovic, who earned his one hundredth win this season. Finished his career with one hundred and fifteen wins and has placed in the woodbeale tournament three times. I'll leave it to Coach Bitts to why we come up.
Could they all stand so we can recognize them? They're all hiding behind the wheel.
Rudy Brown couldn't make it, he has a scrimmage for baseball. And in addition to bringing up these five guys that have the hundred wins, if it wasn't for the COVID year, we would have a sixth in Eric Kovach, he finished with ninety-four. And if it wasn't for the COVID year, a couple of these guys would have blew that all, that win record out of the water. So that's a thing, there was an article in the paper about that before, about we're only the second team in woodbeale history to have five and graduating class with a hundred wins. Not for the COVID, Rudy would have been the only team that had six. So in addition to that, I mean, I just, a couple of things to say, because this group will probably never hear me speak to them again like this, so I don't know. I'm a believer in karma, be a good person all the time. I don't know what I did to be blessed to lead this group of kids. It's been an honor for me to do that over the top couple of years, to great kids. We've always brought up to them that winnings, winning in competition is important. You're competing for everything, like, you know, you're competing for a job, you're gonna be competing for a wife, you're gonna be competing for everything. So winning is important, and they've known this at a, at a young age. My brother and I, Gary and I, we've gotten along on boards over the years. Those really, I don't think those have a lot to do with us, it's more with the parents that are here with, with the kids. They taught them hard work at a young age, and they've been working hard at this sport for, for years. And I've known them for the past ten years when they were coming in at seven, eight years old and getting used to freestyle and learning some different techniques, and that they put in the work. The parents have trusted my brother and I to lead this group throughout their high school career. You know, we might have an unorthodox, unique style of coaching, as some of you may know or heard stories of, but in the end, we're passionate about what we do. And I think that the kids know that, I think that you guys know that. Overall, the, the past forty years have been great. I hope the kids have had fun, and we always try to find a balance between hard work and fun. And I think we've done a pretty good job of that. I think there's stories that have, things that have happened over these forty years that these kids are probably gonna be telling their kids about, you know? Down the road, some funny stories. You know, Zori and I, my, my wife has talked before about the one regret that we have with our son was not having him sooner so he could be around this group and really remember what it's like to do things the right way. Just very proud of them, I love them like they're my own, and they know that. They know that I've always had their backs and, you know, met today, my daughters. Whether they know it or not, this group has saved many kids that have come through this school and joined wrestling. There's a lot of kids that are going down the wrong path that these kids pulled in and said, why don't you come try this sport? And, you know, whether they know it or not, they, they've changed a lot of lives. They sacrificed their body for a woodbeale title. I know Dylan couldn't lift his shoulders up, you know, after that team tournament. You know, Rudy had issues, Joey Joe had knee issues, and Parker blew his knee out in the woodbeale title match and went into states and got us to the woodbeale semis and all of them. And that, that takes a lot of heart to do that. So something else I want them to know is you'll, you'll see, you'll see the shirts wrestling is life, and eat, sleep, wrestle, and all that stuff. And, you know, Parker, I told your brother last year when he graduated, he didn't reach his goal of getting a state medal, but, you know, in the end, wrestling's a very small part, small part of your life. It's just a game, you know? But I just think that the things taught in that room, I think that they're gonna carry on to everything that they do in their lives. Thank you to the administration that showed up to these big events. I mean, you know, Mr. Pushkar was on the floor, and Hershey, I've seen you guys at the woodbeale title matches. You know, you really got to see firsthand and feel the energy and see what really went into, to doing all of that stuff. And it does go to those, you know, the kids that know just you guys there, I know just you guys there. It was a, it was a great run, you know? You guys, I'm very proud of where I come from. They've taught lessons that he's underclassing about, you better be proud of where that, Bergestown across your singlet. And then they done a great job of that, so just very proud of them and, you know, I hope, I hope they have fun along the way, so, sorry, I do. That's a tough group, that's once in a lifetime group that's gonna come through here and it's really paid to see. So that's all I have, so.
We're also recognizing tonight Coach Bitts' one hundred wins. How many did you end up with during Joe?
I, I really don't know.
Well, after your speech, I don't think we have much more to say. I think that you're a once-in-a-lifetime coach in our community, and I thank you for everything you do for our youth. All the students that we recognize tonight, I think Coach Montoni, you know, kinda touched on that, their upbringing. And when we say upbringing, I mean our staff and everybody in the community, what amazing kids we have. So thank you all for what you do for our kids. All right, after all that, section three point three. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the business meeting dated March eleventh, twenty twenty-four as presented? It's Mr. Shalinski, the second time, and Mrs. Seko. Any questions? All in favor?
Five.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any questions tonight on the agenda? Wait, you guys aren't staying for the fun part? What, you guys just leave us? Thank you all for coming tonight, thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. You're such a fun group. Any questions on the agenda tonight? May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Mr. Shalinski, second, Mrs. Seko, any questions? All in favor?
Five.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public comment this evening, Mrs. Jamie Wilson.
Come on, girl. I'm a little bit nervous, so bear with me. My name is Jamie Wilson, I'm from Hanover Township. My son James is in eleventh grade. I'm sorry. I'm a parent volunteer, I'm also a substitute, a professional. For the previous nine years until I hurt my back while working. I loved working at the school and helping our kids while volunteering to help advertise the musical and notice the problem, which is why I'm here. Please note that Mr. Cugini and Ms. Elick did not know that I planned on attending this meeting and the opinions I have spread to them are my own. The problem is that I feel like the performing arts, musical, chorus, and band don't get the same support and recognition as the sports teams. I'm thankfully left, because nothing against them, I think they're amazing. And I wanna see that change for future generations of performing arts students. I'm not diminishing the value of our athletes and their coaches. However, Ms. Elick, her musical and chorus students and Mr. Cugini and the band students are of equal value. They all deserve, deserve support and recognition for their dedication and efforts. Currently, the sign in front of the metal high school reads, "Good luck spring sports and spring break, March twenty-ninth to April first." It was never changed to advertise the musical, which involved Ms. Elick, Austin Michael, and forty-two kids. Last eight weeks, there was a combined chorus band concert, which included Ms. Elick, Mr. Cugini, and approximately ninety kids, plus a remake learning night, which affected the entire metal high school. Those events also then get advertised on the school sign. It's very disheartening and sad for students who gave three months of their time for the musical and all the practice of the chorus band kids, plus all the students involved in remaking and not having their, at events advertised on the sign, if our other school were to get the recognition they deserve. The musical was advertised in the school marquee by Badminton Road, which is appreciated, but you don't see it if it happens to be planted in the moment you drive by. Also, it was listed on the weekly update and mentioned in an email, but although I enjoy the updates and articles from Mrs. Smith's class and the pictures on there, not all parents may read them. My suggestions are these. Give Ms. Elick a good budget so she can buy a great musical and spend money on advertising to get a big poster to display on the school property and throughout the community. I used the twenty-five flyer she gave me, plus I had twenty copied at the UPS store. Yard signs and stakes that I purchased on Amazon and then distributed the size to forty-two businesses in Bergestown and the surrounding areas. Sean Gates also advertised at eight businesses. Other businesses may have advertised as well. However, advertising is important, it's to start with the administration at Bergestown School. We have to have big signs up months in advance so everyone that comes into our property sees the musical and sees what's happening. Also, please be sure to have the sign changed in front of the metal high school. Another suggestion would be to use the remind one call system to advertise the performing arts events, other events at the fourth grade wax museum. We do it when there are playoff tickets for sporting events and other things, and we used to do it for musical as well. So I'd like to see if that can happen again, because it's an effective manner to advertise the musical. My final suggestion is to put the event on the school's main webpage. Right now, if you wanna look, you have to go to the Bergestown Middle High School webpage and then click on activity, and then click on spring musical to get to the page where you can buy tickets. I'd like to see it front and center, because I was standing, I'm eighteen, and I ran, holding up a Bergestown sign, trying to get advertising, so I was trying to do what I could. But that would be helpful if you could just click on it. In conclusion, all our kids put their heart and soul into these activities, whether it's sports, performing arts, or other activities. I saw several board members and one member of the administration at the musical. I also saw several board members at the choral band concert. We can all agree that the musical and the concert were amazing. If you haven't attended one, please come, it's an awesome experience. Please support and recognize all our students in these events, performing arts and sports equally. The kids will appreciate it, and as a parent, I would really appreciate it too. Thank you for your time, and thank you for giving us our opportunity.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. I know it's not easy to, I've been up there, you know? Giving my opinion, it's not easy to get up there. I, I do wanna say that I think in terms of board, this board in particular, I think it's really made a strong movement to be more supportive of our fine arts. We have an ad hoc fine arts committee, which Mr. Shalinski is the chair, and he was pretty integral in pushing to have the marching band return. And then, you know, we really pushed for the robes. To me personally, it was important for our chorus especially to have robes because they're a team. And they wanted, I, it was important for me to have them be uniform.
They look great.
Yes, and then everybody supported it, thank goodness. And, and you know, the musical, Mr. Pushkar actually, right after, I'd say a week or so after the musical, he sat down, sat down with Ms. Elick and Austin to ask how we could better support them. So we are, and it doesn't seem like it maybe, and you're right. I think that the sporting contests are multiple times a week where our fine arts kids spend the whole semester preparing for one huge event. And it only happens once. So we could probably be a little better at promoting things. And I think that the sports kids get recognized because they're three times a week in promoting this stuff. But I, I do think that we're really moving in the direct, right direction for the musical, and you're very, you're heard.
Well, I appreciate that, and I think it would be awesome because these are kids that are their own group.
Exactly. That's why it was really important for us to bring the marching band back.
Right, they're important.
Yes.
And then you drive up and you see, oh, what about us? So I'm, I'm the voice for the us.
Well, thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right. Section four, reports and increases. All right, section four, reports and presentations. Number one, Ms. O'Donnell.
Good evening. Uh, on tonight's agenda, we have the proposed final budget, which the board has to pass by May thirty first, according to plans to make a department of education time lines. So, this budget includes the tax increase up to the index, which is almost a whole mill. It has a point ninety-five, two mils, for a total of fifteen point two six four five. Uh, we also did hear from PD that we'll be able to continue the property tax reduction through the Homestead Act, and that also increased this year. Um, so that will increase about fifty dollars from what we were last year. Um, so hopefully, to take a moment away from the increase, that's, if we, if the final budget goes through with this, um, to lighten that blow a little bit. And I, I did not put in there numbers purely proposed increases in basic income and special income funding. I didn't put it in this budget because I, I don't know what, what they're gonna do finally. And then if that will go through, that, that increases about hundred ninety-five thousand, which would be nice, we could include in the budget, so. This isn't, again, this isn't final final. Um, I'll meet with the administration, um, before the loss of the extra money. It's gonna be some decisions we're gonna have to make before the final budget. But tonight, I ask that you pass this, um, proposed final, just so we can go along with PD's timelines.
So, there are a couple of things to, to add to, to what Ms. O'Donnell said. So, um, if we go to the index, just to put it in perspective, on a hundred thousand dollars, that's property. The tax rate, your tax would increase by ninety-eight dollars roughly for the year on a hundred thousand dollars. But there's been an increase in the Homestead Homestead exemption, so it's important for people to apply for that, uh, that mailing to go out, um, toward that end. So, last year, the Homestead Homestead was two hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-three cents. Ours projects out to be three hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-four cents. So, that's an additional fifty-four dollars in exemption. So, where that is, where the ninety-eight dollar increase because of the index is really only forty-three dollars, not only, but it's forty-three dollars. So, that does soften the blow. It kind of, it hit well this year with the increase in that, and that's goes to the gambling money and all those other sorts, sources of funds. I did also receive some, uh, correspondence from, from one of the, the, um, watchdog groups that there, there may actually be some charter school, uh, funding reform, uh, uh, this year. We'll see. We'll wait and we'll see. But the current, whatever being mantered about, uh, has that. I have a legislative day tomorrow with the IU that I'm going to attend, and we'll see if we get some more information there. This is only the preliminary budget. And, um, you will then do the, uh, final one in, in June, and that's for the second half of June as well.
Thank you.
Jamie, they were talking about this voice word. I didn't hear you go there.
Listen, my sister had the block one. Mrs. Ferenciu.
Just need a minute after helping set up.
Okay, well, they're setting up. I skipped correspondence. You can hit that real quick.
Very quickly, um, there are several attachments to your, uh, the correspondence section of the, uh, agenda and board docs. You have two, two LERTA mailings. They're actually the, the same, uh, item, but just with another cover letter. And just to notice, these don't require reaction, but these are possible to see how judicially sound things that are posted. Hopefully, some, some properties that they sold and get back on the tax rolls.
Thank you.
This company, internet is unstable.
Oh, that's great.
Good evening, everybody. I am presenting on behalf of the administrators tonight. As the year comes to a close, we sometimes overlook the numerous contributions made by our dedicated teachers, administrators and staff in improving the educational experience for our students. We would like to highlight the utilization of the funding for academic and social emotional initiatives in the Burgess Town Educational System following the pandemic. So, this is for the past couple of years. Two of our biggest initiatives that we have are in English Language Arts and our math curriculum. We had program updates, starting with our Wonders program. Wonders is a research-based curriculum that is designed to deliver high-quality literacy instruction, support, supported by the science of reading. It provides a comprehensive plan for meeting the needs of all students. So, we started a few years, right when I started in this position, we, in utilizing Wonders twenty seventeen, we upgraded it to Wonders twenty twenty-three. It's for grades K through six, and it's a research-based program. In addition, Mrs. Manki is working with grades K through twelve on a K-RT program. It'll help our students better understand literacy skills. It's, uh, daily activities for phonemic awareness. It provides students in grades K through twelve with oral and auditory skills to develop the essential reading skills that they need. Our Acadience data collection is a diagnostic tool that we use. We actually use it in ELA and math. It's, uh, provides our students with tier one and tier two interventions to meet their needs at their levels. Through the pandemic, we observed there have been some learning gaps, and we're using these diagnostic tools to try to close that gap. It helps our teachers with grouping of students. It is also used for our special education teachers. They use it for progress monitoring to help, try to help meet the needs and the goals of the students that have IEPs. We've started intervention groups, um, BAC at the elementary. They have really nice centers that they use. They use our data. They analyze the data, and then they have the groups that they meet with individually. They have interactive lessons. So, they've been doing a really nice job with their intervention groups. In addition to that, we have title teachers in ELA and math, and they work to provide interventions based on that data. So, they pool students and they push in. In grades seven and eight, we have teachers that are using an intervention class, it's one period a day, where they're also trying to meet the needs of those students. The English Department, Middle High School, continued years back, and they found a program called Common Lit. It is a program that provides lessons for those students, but also data. So, they've been using that in grades seven through twelve. The CDTs or classroom diagnostic tools are actually free. They're provided by the state. Uh, it's a free tool. It's very similar in format to the PSSAs and the Keystone. And allows the teachers to see what standards, what specific standards our students are struggling with and to provide interventions for, for those standards. Structure Literacy Training is a mandated training by the state, which they provided a ten-hour training for our teachers. The intermediate unit shrunk it a little bit, and our, our teachers, administrators, staff saw this through seven hours of training. All right, next is the math program. So, we introduced a new math program. It's called Illustriative Math in grades K through eight. And seven and eight is called Open Up Resources, and K through five is Imagine Learning. The new Illustriative Math program provides our students with a student-centered approach to learning. It allows our students to think critically while engaging in solving complex math problems. So, it takes our traditional form of teaching and provides an innovative way for the students to learn. It's more engaging, there's manipulatives. And when we go to the classrooms, I feel like the students are having fun. The teachers were extremely wary to teach, to change this way of teaching, but I'm getting pretty positive feedback. So, in math, we also have the Acadients and the CDT data collection. I'm currently working with the math department to determine what professional learning needs that they have. ELA, we have a representative coming in from the intermediate unit to train those teachers. Science, the state has, um, released the new STEEL standards. So, STEEL stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Environmental Literacy and Sustainability. So, they are K through twelve standards that our teachers are gonna have to implement in both, um, some of our special areas as well as our science classes. So, we've been working with the teachers to look at new programs. Um, we have an intermediate unit trainer coming in to help us implement the new science standards. That's gonna be a huge initiative within the next two years. They're then gonna change the PSSAs to reflect new standards. Oh, went too fast. Our technology now helped us to put these on the boards, which you can see here in every classroom. Uh, we're hoping that all the teachers are using it, but it's just another tool that they can use to provide interactive lessons. Now, I've also added access points all over the building, both buildings, which should increase our Wi-Fi and our, our capability. Each teacher got a new laptop, and then recently this year with the funding, we put the new camera system in to help with visibility and safety, and they're pretty impressive, the pictures that we're seeing. Software, Adobe is a new software that we have within the last two years to help the teachers with editing. Editinside is a huge data warehouse system that we have. Our CDTs, our Acadians, our PSSA, Keystone, classroom data, all go into this warehouse. It helps us identify students that may be at risk and not be on target to graduate. Uh, it helps us identify the students that have that learning gap that may need help. Happy Numbers is a fun resource that we have at the elementary. It supplements, I talked about the centers that the teachers are using, so it helps, um, provide the students with some supplemental math resource. And then Navigate Three Sixty is a safety suite that we are, uh, we initiated it this year, and we're gonna be given more training with it next year. These are some initiatives. Um, I know we talked about seven line sets, the social emotional learning. We are having, we had a remake learning night here at the middle high school last week, and we're gonna be having one at the elementary in the upcoming weeks. And then Wildfire Leadership is a new, sorry, I don't like to change. So, Wildfire Leadership is a program that we use with the administrators to help us, provide us with resources and to help us with our professional learning. Well, this day, I've talked about in the past, I have, when I went to my SXSW conference in Texas, I worked with a group. They're called the Alpacas. And they provide Alpaca kits. They help us celebrate teachers and their accomplishments. So, the teachers are gonna be learning about that within the next week or two. And I'm not gonna read all the assemblies and the celebrations we have here, but I kinda asked all the administrators to gather a list of just different things that our students have been involved in or different assemblies or social motion, uh, social emotional learning that has taken place. Not all, are there any questions?
Now, I've also got a scan to you.
I have a question for Matt. Did you ever figure out, um, the Wi-Fi or the, or internet or whatever?
As of right now, no. We actually have a thing, uh, to talk with Hickory Cable. But, and I believe they were talking about possibly giving it to us, uh, cost, no cost. So, that'll, I'll put that on. Everything's right around the corner.
Thank you, Mrs. Ferenciu. It's really a lot of stuff you've done. I don't think anybody realized. You know, when you see it all at once, how much really is going on. Thank you. Four point three, solicitor, Mr. Berger. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Pushkar.
Thank you. Uh, we did have an executive session, uh, prior to the meeting. We received legal counsel and for, uh, personnel. Just a few things, I think, now that I'm on the head, is everything's right around the corner. Uh, it's just busy. I can't believe it's mid-May already, and we're wrapping up, uh, um, activities. You know, we have our, our spring socks, another, another chess and sports season, uh, with softball and, and baseball. They're currently in the playoffs. All the senior activities that are going on, the challenge picnic coming up, uh, on the twentieth, and, uh, just, just a whirlwind kind of activities leading up to, uh, commencement on the evening of the, uh, twenty-third and then the end of the school year, the twenty-ninth, and, uh, preparing for next year.
Thank you. Real quick, um, I wanted to talk about the senior activities. I think it's important for everybody to know that the senior pictures that line the drive, as well as the Adopt a Senior Program, is not sponsored by the school. That is a group of volunteers in the community. I think there was a little bit of confusion there, so. Just so everyone knows, these are volunteer-run programs throughout the community. As for the, uh, senior activities, I wanted to thank Mr. Fadden for kinda stepping up when there was a little bit of, uh, lag maybe. I heard you've been dealing with all the bandwidth stuff and whatnot, so thank you very much. And Mrs. Manki, thank you for supporting our new sponsor and accommodating her schedule. And thank you to Mr. Pushkar for approving the jeans fundraiser day to get, so that our seniors could have some activities. And then thank you to the faculty and staff who participated in that. So, I just wanted to thank everybody for making stuff happen for the seniors. And I know Mrs. Slate didn't have a report tonight, but do we have weather? Who should be concerned about flooding, anything in that home? Thank you.
The last time she said no. Kinda hard to read lately.
May I have a motion to approve all administrative reports as presented? Second, Mr. Shalinski. Second, Mrs. Seko. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section five, Budget and Finance, Mr. Vitalik.
Uh, number five point one, I'd like to make a motion to ratify the list of bills for April and May twenty twenty four as presented.
May I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, five point two, I'd like to make a motion for the separate financial statements as presented and placed on file for all.
May I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, five point three, I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five proposed final budget as presented by administration.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Shalinski. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, five point four, I'd like to make a motion to accept the annual financial report as submitted by Cypher and Cypher and the company management letter comments year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Shalinski. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, five point five, I'd like to make a motion to appoint William Price as board treasurer for one-year term beginning July, July first, twenty twenty-four to serve through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
I like how we do it when he's not here, so we can't see anything. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Shalinski. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, five point six, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mercy Campbell as board secretary for a four-year term beginning July first, twenty twenty-four to serve through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
That's a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Shalinski. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, five point seven, I'd like to make a motion to authorize Peacock to allow P to enter into a stipulation to settle the tax assessment. Assessment appeal for parcel number three four zero zero one one zero six zero 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 two seven zero zero at Washington County Court of Common Pleas, number twenty twenty-three dash eleven oh six, and assessed value of two hundred and seventy-three thousand one hundred dollars.
That's motion may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Shalinski. Any questions?
Yeah, Jamie, can you find out when Ken Coe is coming off there, maybe, out there? I might have, okay. Is it, is it, Ken and Coe, yeah, they're the last, they should be.
Ken?
I think it's Ken, K-E-N-C-E, but they should, they should be the last.
They're the ones here, it was them and the expansion.
I thought everything was off.
Everything's off, everything's off now.
As of this year.
As of this year, January first, everything came off.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, five point eight, I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five preliminary budget for Western Area Career and Technology Center totaling six million, two hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars with Burgess Town share of, share at three hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-six cents. six million, two hundred forty-five thousand, four hundred seventy dollars, with Burgeston's share of, share at three hundred fifty-four thousand, three hundred ninety-eight dollars and thirty-six cents, representing an increase of seven thousand, three hundred dollars, nineteen cents from last year's contribution.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Sucko, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Five point nine, I'd like to make a motion to approve the attached settlement agreement in general lease to resolve the special education matter.
Second.
Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Five point ten, I'd like to make, make a motion to approve the following resolution related to public school improvement grant. Be resolved that the Burgeston Area School District of Washington County hereby request a public school facility improvement grant of up to five million dollars from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for roof remediation on the Burgeston Area Elementary Center and the Burgeston Middle High School. Be further resolved that the Burgeston Area School District hereby designate Steven P. Pushkar as superintendent and Jamie Adon as business manager as the officials to execute all documents and agreements between the Burgeston Area School District and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Five point eleven, I'd make a motion to accept the donation of a huge vehicle, used vehicles that would be low and all its components from the Swinton Police Department and the Burgeston PA to be used for district-related purposes.
That's a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And thank you to Chief Bernie LaRue for her donation. Section six, education, Mrs. Lemon.
Good evening. Under six point one, health and safety report, nothing to report at this time. Six point two, the enrollment report is available online. Six point three, the guidance newsletters are also available online. Six point four, scholarships. I first would direct you to please click on the link online to access the scholarship information from the guidance office. The motion is to please acknowledge the scholarships to include a list of honors, which were awarded to the senior award ceremony and in the summer of twenty-three, twenty-four school year as presented.
That's a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Six point five, professional development. I'd like to make a motion, please, to ratify the listed professional development as presented with costs to be paid by Title II. Tina Kim to attend implementing the standards of mathematical practice at Intermediate Unit One, Cole Center PA, February twenty-one, twenty twenty-four, with a total approximate cost of ninety-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. Maria Schaefer, Beth Roman, and Beth Roman to attend PDE Summit Updates from across the contest areas at Intermediate Unit One in Cole Center on April fourth, twenty twenty-four, with total approximate cost one hundred eighteen dollars and seventy-two cents. Andrea Zupanzik to attend Prompting with a Purpose, Chappot, I'm sorry, Education Collaborative, Intermediate Unit One in Cole Center, April fifth, twenty twenty-four, total approximate cost seventy-seven dollars, thirty-six cents. And Melissa Ferencu and Jamie Smith to attend Innovative Learning Community at Intermediate Unit One in Cole Center on April fifth, twenty twenty-four, total approximate cost one hundred seventeen dollars and ninety-two cents.
That's a motion, may I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion, please, to approve the listed professional development as presented with costs to be paid by Title II. Jamie Smith to attend Keystone Summit at Chippensburg University in Chippensburg PA, July twenty-second through the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, total approximate cost four hundred fifty dollars and ninety-six cents.
May I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Six point six, agreements. Number one, I'd like to make a motion, please, to ratify the Alternative Education for Disruptive Youth Educational Service Agreement for twenty-three, twenty-four with Intermediate Unit One as presented.
May I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number two, I'd like to make a motion, please, to approve the listed agreements with the Bradley Center as presented, items A through E.
May I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number three, I'd like to make a motion to approve the listed agreements with the Intermediate Unit One as presented, items A through D.
Okay.
Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number four, I'd like to make a motion, please, to approve the agreement with Adolph Way Educational Services as presented.
May I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number five, I'd like to make a motion, please, to approve the Student Assistance Program Agreement with Center for Community Resources as presented.
May I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And number six, I'd like to make a motion, please, to approve the agreement with AMI Incorporated of Washington and Green Counties as presented.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section seven, personnel, Mr. Shalinski.
Seven point one is the employment disclaimer. Seven point two, reservations. Motion to accept with regret the reservations as listed of the following personnel. Shelby John, ten-month secretary, effective April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Pam Scrupie, ten-month secretary, effective June fourth, twenty twenty-four. Nicole Patterson, teacher, end of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
That's a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Sucko, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Seven point three, employment. One, motion to ratify the following employment item. Elizabeth Foley to the position of teacher, step seven, MIF, at appropriated salary according to the BABA Professional Agreement beginning April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
That's a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Sucko, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number two, motion to approve the following employment items. Brittany Craft, position of teacher, step two, bachelor's, beginning August twentieth, twenty twenty-four, pending receipt of all paperwork, contingent upon completion of all orientation activities.
That's a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Sucko. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
B. Katie Baker, to the position of teacher, step one, bachelor's, beginning August twentieth, twenty twenty-four, pending receipt of all paperwork, contingent upon completion of all orientation activities.
That's another motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Lemon, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Seven point four, reclassifications. Motion to ratify the following reclassification of positions A through I as listed on the agenda.
That's a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Sucko, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Seven point five, additional compensation. Motion to ratify the listed additional compensation items as presented, A through D is listed on the agenda.
That's a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Sucko, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Two, motion to approve the listed additional compensation item as presented, A and B is listed on the agenda.
That's a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Sucko, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Three, motion to approve Don Ware to the position of temporary inspector mechanic on an intermittent basis. That's a term to be necessary by the administration to respond to administrative bulletin twenty-two.
That's a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Sucko. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Seven point six, leaves of absence. One, motion to approve Kristen Prebo, cafeteria monitor, for following unpaid dates, March twelfth, nineteenth, twenty-first, April tenth, eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
That's a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Sucko, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Two, motion to approve Maria Kelly Manko, cafeteria monitor, for following unpaid day, April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Sucko, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Three, motion to approve Shawna Johnston, head assistant cook, for the following unpaid day, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Sucko, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number four, motion to approve employee zero nine seven eight four two for intermittent FM LA leave of absence beginning in the upcoming school year with return date of November first, twenty twenty-four.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Sucko, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Seven point seven, substitutes. Motion to ratify the substitute list for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school years presented, A, Nurse Baby Sigwar, B, Castodin Christina Borner, and C, Teacher Anthony Picarello.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Metallic. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Seven point eight, volunteers. Motion to ratify the listed volunteer as presented, A, Nathan Godowski, to the position of volunteer baseball coach, as of May first, twenty twenty-four.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Metallic, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section eight, athletics and related activities, Mr. Metallic.
Section eight, athletic report is available online. Track and field, I think ten athletes will be competing Wednesday. Boys' baseball is competing tomorrow night at seven o'clock at Burger Field in Robinson. Girls' softball is playing tomorrow at six up in Mars. I do have a question on transportation. Is there going to be transportation for girls' softball? What time will they be leaving?
Are you kidding me? Four o'clock?
Four o'clock, okay. It's, it's, they like, they have to be on the field like by five-thirty. Will they be there by five? It's like an hour between, I'd look between an hour and an hour and fifty-five to get there. So, if they leave at four, it's possible they get there at six o'clock with no time tomorrow.
I have forty-five minutes on GPS.
I have, Google Maps has at that time leaving, but at three, three-thirty, four o'clock, it's fifty-five minutes at the earliest, an hour fifty-five at the latest. I know, I mean, while they, are they able to, were they, how come they were turned down to, from getting a bus from charter bus they were wanting to pay Friday to take them to the game? Why was that turned down?
It, it, it becomes an issue, actually.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just wondering, because that's, if they weren't willing to pay, there was a five person bus available enough to do it. Friday, there was a bus, there was a twenty-four passenger bus that the softball team and their boosters were going to pay to leave, to have them leave by three-thirty tomorrow, so they're there by five o'clock to be able to prepare for it.
So, so a couple of things. Nathan did talk to me about that on Friday, and I had, you know, I said, well, first of all, reach out to Lippio to see if they'll change.
They can't do that because there's no lights.
So, I asked him, that's, that was the response. With regard to paying for one, now, you know, we have to file a title and I report every year in terms of funding. If you start to have boosters then pay for something that goes above and beyond what the district offers, and you only have that one, and it's that one sport, then you're opening up yourself for a bunch of things. So, sure, it assured me that she sees them getting there within an hour.
And what happens if they're on?
Well, you know, I mean...
I mean, then you're going to have parents complaining, you're going to have students, you're going to have, you might have a lot of regret.
You, 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 you may have that. But I will also say that, you know, it could be that the game before them goes over. I mean, I remember last year's softball or baseball, whatever, we were lost.
I mean, the whole, the whole point could have been avoided if they would have been allowed to purchase. It wasn't the cost of district, anything, and it was, if the contract were that, we could have paid the driver whatever they were due to make the trip. There's something now that there's a possibility that it could get ugly with the different things happening.
Mr. Berger, if the boosters are paying for it, and the school's kind of out of it, are we off the hook? If, 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 Mr. Metallic is like, I'll write the check right now.
Is softball, softball boosters completely off the record, or are they, we still win their money? So, they're still...
It's a little far off, we should look at it closer.
I'm surprised they're spending... It's still a river of money.
Yeah, but for, for that, but it's for that.
Can you want a check to reverse on school district?
Right? So, this is part of the reason why we wanted the boosters...
Well, yeah, I understand that, but they also had a donation from someone else that's going to pay the whole thing for it.
Right?
Yeah. I see, what, what's the issue with that?
If they, if they donated it?
Yeah, say, there was donating.
Would that be an issue, Mr. Berger?
And again, I did pull that, Mr. Pushkar did, it's always been my understanding on Title Nine is the expenditure of government funds.
But what we're saying is, if I wrote a check, my boosters... So, if somebody donated it, if I wrote a check...
But we have to disclose, we have to disclose a lot of it. But again, I, I'm sorry to him, but it's, Title Nine is expenditure of government money and private is not. Now, I've never seen the reports, you know, he hasn't filled out. But it's, private is not the expenditure of government funds.
So, does this go back to the boosters? Like, Mr. Berger pointed out, if we had nothing to do with that, they could spend it on a helicopter for a weekend.
You know, and I'm going to go, we haven't talked, you know, it... And I haven't seen the report. Every time I've had this conversation with, you know, leading up to this and with Barb, you know, repeatedly talking about moving tomorrow, but, you know, again, I was assured that you would be there for it. Now, I heard that the coach didn't, you know, he wanted more than that one hour, Title, what I, I'm about to...
The whole issue is, if you're leaving around four o'clock, you're going to hit traffic. It'll take forty, you're going to hit traffic on Robinson to get to seventy-nine. You're going to hit traffic after you get off of seventy-nine at Mars to get to the high school.
Cranberries.
And that's all a mess. If you go through the city up twenty-eight and Route Eight, you're hitting traffic, green tree all the way through. This, a trip is going to, at that time, is going to probably take at least an hour and fifteen minutes to an hour and a half to get there.
I'm sorry, our bus director is clearly disagreeing. Can we allow her to speak regarding this?
Fifty-one minutes I've got, and even in traffic, you're looking, if they leave here at ten to four, there's no problem being there before five o'clock.
Will there be an issue with track and field on Wednesday?
No.
Okay. If there's a rain out, they have to do both Wednesday, what, do we have an issue then?
I don't know. I, I, I'm going to drive a call off.
Shirley predicts what?
I, I'm just asking, I mean, I, I think with...
If you're a driver, the call's off. I mean, exactly.
Every school district in the area is dealing with the same thing. Are you pretty sure we're going to leave at ten to four?
Well, we're going to, Kenny and Kenny's the first time about, he usually gets on the line at like four minutes to four. He's going, could be running General Mission Center first, be running first, running by the bus, all the other buses leave, so best likely to. I don't have a driver.
That's why I was asking if we can go out, reach out to other businesses or other transportation companies to fill the void. That's my whole thing there. We've had multiple junior high basketball games canceled, boys and girls this year, and the past two years, because we don't have drivers that can take them there.
And we've also had very, very, drivers have been driving sick, myself.
I understand that, I, I'm, my, my, I understand that. My, my point is, we need to be, have another resource available to use besides your drivers, if we have them or not.
But Chris, we also have to understand, this is a statewide issue, it's not just...
I understand that, but there is a possibility you can have other dri, other companies use it, you can use screens.
If, listen, but if we let go with the booster policy, they can do whatever they want with their money, if that's what you want to do. We did, yeah.
My, my whole point was, that there was, there was a possibility that you wouldn't have to worry about it, and it was turned down. Now, if we, what if we, if they make the state playoffs, we rent, we rented a bus for the wrestling team, what's the difference between renting that and someone renting it for the charter for softball?
So, so our renting of, of buses comes down to, in, in the collective bargaining agreement for the support staff, the mileage of how far they are away from, so that's how we always go to them that bus. That's how that works. And, and it's every team, or not every team, it's the teams that qualify for that, and then there's the distance. So, you could have a team that's in Al, I think it was Altona you drove to? You know, we drove to there, but State College, you don't, you know, it's a little further, so those are the determiners.
Are we going to have a, for the track qualifiers, a good state, are they going to be, are we hiring the, something to take them?
So, we would hire for this, yes, we would hire for that because it's a hirsion.
It's the districts.
It's the districts, yeah.
Okay.
The whipwheels for track are a silver draw, that would be a difference.
I mean, the state, if we have a state qualifier, if we have one state qualifier, what will they...
Well, so, so we could have, so the collective bargaining agreement says that the, the drivers have the essential right of free use. But then it happens that after so many, after so many miles, we can take it, they don't have that, that right. It could be something where we end up where the, the coach, you, you have, we have permission from the coach and the player to drive out there. I don't know how many will have that. We could have a, a couple, I, I mean, you know. So it may not make sense to rent a coach, a small coach bus for that. The parents may be going on, so we've done that before. I think we've done that with wrestling too.
How many sports games have been canceled over the last two years due to no transportation?
Cancelled or rescheduled?
Cancelled.
Number two, the years.
I mean, I guess we can go back and, and do work with Nathan and find out, but I don't, I don't, I wouldn't say they were actually canceled. I would say they were rescheduled.
Okay. Well, I, that's one way to know. One way to know if any work canceled.
Yeah, we can find that out.
Okay.
But to be clear, if the boosters were not under our umbrella, they could pay for any transportation they wanted anywhere.
That is not, that's not my understanding of how that works.
If the boosters were. But it has nothing to do with it.
Yeah.
But, but, but our, but our kids are benefiting from it, and they're benef, benefiting from it in a way that not, that another group would not.
Well, the thing is, what they're going to benefit because you're going to look, football's going to raise ten, twelve thousand dollars. Track and field's going to raise five hundred bucks. But it might be more than that, whatever, just give me an example. So if one raises more than the others, yeah, they're going to benefit.
Right.
Yeah, I know, just, I'm sure they do, but I mean, just make it two numbers.
Yeah.
You know, somebody's, they're not all going to, you have the same amount of money per student, so they're going to have different amounts that they can spend on a per student.
A lot of that's based on the amount of work that they put in as well.
Well, yeah, 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 I'm taking. You know, the whole, but just the nuts of it is, you know, it's one thing for a check with a Burgess Town School District to pay for a charter bus that goes straight there. It's in there, you know, you're going to have disadvantage anyway. It's just a lot easier for boosters to do it.
Yeah. I agree. All right. Any other questions, Mr. Metallic?
No.
Transportation, Mrs. Seko.
I would like to say, again, on April twenty-third is Bus Forever Appreciation Day, so I'd like to extend that entry again as the district agreed. Um, the reports are attached, and then if we have to, nine point two, alignment motion to ratify the school transportation agreement as presented with parent guardian permission, data for teen teachers to transport students to Cambridge, Lincoln, and Burgess Town, PA, on April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, for the running of the rules project.
That's a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Shalinski. Any questions? All in favor? They did, they took a second place.
Yeah.
Where'd you go, Mrs. Ram?
Thank you, dear.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section ten, buildings and grounds. Mr. Metallic.
Uh, ten point two, I'd like to make, make a motion to waive a three hundred and fifty dollar fee for use of Hill Memorial Stadium Track and Field and to charge Bethel Christian School zero for use of track and field for private school track.
That's a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Shalinski. Any questions?
Could it be reworded instead of saying a track meet, that it's like a field day, since it is not technically a track meet?
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section eleven, Western Area Career and Technology Center. Mrs. Seko.
There is a calendar that is attached. Um, also, last Friday, after the seniors had their awards year, they went down to Western Area where they had a career signing day, which I think was awesome. They, um, did a live broadcast, which you can actually go onto the website and look at that again. Uh, Western Area, if I get the dates right here, is doing the presentation at the elementary on May sixteenth. And, uh, this Thursday will be their completion ceremony where our students will walk in and receive their certification.
Awesome. I didn't know you could watch the signing day.
Yeah. Um, actually, if you go on their Facebook page or even on their website, there are live links. They do live show, like, their registration is going to be a lot of things like that.
Oh, thank you. Section twelve, food service. Mrs. Walsh.
Food service report is available online.
Thank you. Section thirteen, student discipline. Mr. Burgoyne.
Nothing to report.
Awesome. Section fourteen, policy. Mr. Shalinski.
Uh, fourteen, one's first reading, one first reading of the listed policy as presented, uh, fourteen, two. The final reading and motion to approve the listed policy as presented, policy number three, public comment and board meetings revised.
That's a motion. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Seko. Any questions?
I have questions. Um, so, in the, in the policy, there is a two-minute of limit per person. Is there, uh, trying to understand, is there a full, um, timeline for total comment section? There are sources between one hour, thirty minutes?
Whatever outside it is.
Well, being honest.
No, I'm just.
No, right, right, so, I mean, in the, uh, that, and then also, who sets the order that they're speaking? If there is a timeline, that way we can make sure that Burge Town residents speak before, you know, there's a timeline.
Well, I think technically, there's supposed to come in state, their address and everything else. So we determine if they're at Burgess Town, I'd guess. Um, I think, did we pick the two-minute limit?
It's on, it's written in here.
Yeah.
I thought this went in order of who submitted they were speaking.
Yeah. The two-minute, from what I understand, because I asked Mrs. Graham about this a while ago. Um, and it, we can choose to enforce it, is what she explained to us, like, especially if there was like fifteen people coming to talk. Or we can choose to ignore it. Is how I understood that.
Right. My, well, my thing is, so what about public comment session, if you mean, should be limited to thirty minutes, one hour?
You mean total.
Correct.
So that's, that's, in, in, in that policy, those things are all, the ones that are old or new. We did not check those off.
So which one was the policy?
To, we did not check those off to have a limit.
Okay, so they're not, it's not going to be part of the policy?
No.
Okay.
Unless the board wants to, but not.
But we also, do we re, can, say somebody came in with bananas, can we like stop them?
Yeah, that's obvious.
That's, yeah.
We always have the ability, the one thing, and I, I didn't review this with Mr. Pushcar, but, um, I guess he already had it far previously, but if you've got a resident who wants to talk on something, you've got to tell me if it exceeds thirty minutes. You've got to let them talk, because you can't take no action without listening to all the comments that are made.
That's what I mean, you know, timelines, so if there's other people here.
We got to listen.
We got to listen.
But we can implement that two-minute limit.
Right, we still look in it, three hours of it.
Right.
I just want to make sure that if there was a timeline, we set an order on who can speak.
We talked about that before, not the time, but we talked about, uh.
If they came in from, like, the district.
Right, I touched that one before.
Well, we talked about profanity and stuff, but if they were reading from like a book's, a book excerpt, we were specially, specially allowed. Allow them to get into some of their history, stuff like that.
Yeah, there's nothing on that.
No, you still, he said it's still on, right. So the express, it's still being recorded.
Yeah, but I thought, yeah, I thought, I thought if they were reading from an excerpt. I thought that's, because we talked about that. If they came in, because if there's a book that somebody doesn't agree with, and there's, whatever they can read aloud.
Well, I'm fine with that, but I'm saying, the policy says, he says.
Correct, yeah, now, if they're, obviously, I.
So, is there something you want to change from here, or?
No, no, I just want to make sure if there was a timeline, I was just thinking, no, I thought it would be nice to be out of the, like I said, my main thing was, I just want to make sure that the timeline wasn't, there wasn't a hard timeline. If there was, I want to make sure there was a word for a person to speak.
Okay.
Since there is no hard timeline.
Okay. You should also, now, there's a criminal statute that if someone disrupts a public meeting, they should be arrested.
Oh, yeah.
That's whether it's your policy or not, I mean, we're not going to let meetings get out of hand.
No. No, except my only concern was like, I wasn't sure, since it wasn't checked off, that it was listed, there's new, I wasn't sure.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section fifteen, old business, new business. No? Sixteen, legislative. Mr. Metallic. May I have a motion to close the meeting? Mr. Shalinski, we got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.